Ms. Johnson, if you'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Mr. Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
And Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. We're called to order. Commissioner Lucas, if you would lead us in prayer and then the ROTC will take over for the pledge.
Mayor, if you'd please stand. By your heads, dear Lord, we want to thank you for this evening. I ask that you be with us tonight as we conduct business for this community. I ask that you be with each person here tonight, each person in our community. God bless Fairview, bless our country. In Jesus's name, we pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Collins. Action. Watch. Is there a presentation?
I think it's under item seven, A.
Approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor.
Yes.
Before we approve, I need to add, as new business, we can do 11C, I guess, or twelve communication from the Parks and Landscape Board.
You want to add that as a new business item, or do you want to do it under your communications part?
It probably needs to be an agenda item.
So is that yes?
Yes. New business 11C probably would be proper.
Parks and landscaping?
Yes, communication from the Parks and Landscape.
Move to approve as amended?
Second.
The amended minutes. Move to approve the amended minutes. Commissioner Butler?
Amended agenda, yes ma'am.
I mean, yes, excuse me.
Mayor, were we not also changing something on eight, A and B?
Yes, so eight, A will be the finance report, B will be public works report, C will be city manager report. Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Are there any more changes to the agenda? We have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Public hearings. Citizen comments. Do we have anyone tonight?
None tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Public announcements, presentation from the American Legion Post 248 to Fairview High School Junior ROTC.
Mayor, Commissioner. The American Legion Post 248 through its efforts at fireworks sales, we're able to accumulate $1,900 that we'd like to donate tonight to the Fairview High School JROTC program. And we have at tonight's attendance some of those members. We have also a big check and we believe we're going to do a little photo opportunity. Now, I thought maybe it'd be best if you guys stayed up on the higher platforms if you want to get the photos and then we get a lineup down in the front. They'll try to pilot it up.
One more.
Oh, yeah. Take one with all of them here.
Thank you for the hard work of the American Legion Post and everything. We love you. Awesome. We do a lot of service, so it'll be really awesome. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Item seven B, city events, and I guess I will give Richard's report about the July 3rd event. This was the 11th Annual July 3rd Celebration. The July 3rd event is the largest attended event in the city with approximately 16,000 people attending this year. Richard would like to thank all of our sponsors and for everyone coming out to the event. Richard begins planning for July 3rd many months before. If anyone or any business would like to be a sponsor of this event, please call him or come by City Hall. It's on. Is that better? So that means you still can't hear me?
It's better now.
Do I need to read that report again? Good.
Did you say 11,000, Mayor? What was the number you said of people?
16,000.
16,000 people.
Wow.
Estimated 16,000 people attending this year's July 3rd event.
Our population almost doubled that evening.
Yes. Item nine, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 10, old business. And I am so sorry, we have completely, we're going back. Is this why you couldn't hear me? We're going back to item eight. I'm surprised you didn't say something.
Oh, no, no ma'am, I was...
You've never been known to hold your tongue.
Oh, well.
The finance report?
Yes, Mayor. Members of commission, just a couple of items for you tonight. On the finance report itself, just some broad overview for where we are. Our fiscal year closes on June 30 of each year. We're a July 1 through June 30 fiscal year. We're in the process now of closing the month of June and the fiscal year that ended on June 30. I have two items for you tonight, just to, for informational purpose, so you know where we are financially. The first is, you'll see a two-page document that handed you. The front page is highlighted. It has green highlights on that document. That is our reserve fund. You may recall that a couple of years ago, a few years ago now, we established a reserve fund separate from our operating account to make sure that there was no commingling of any dollars and a reserve fund was actually a true reserve fund. I can report to you tonight, and did previously, but this document is from that source. We invest our reserve fund in local government investment pool. That's a program from the state of Tennessee. As of June 30, our amount in our reserve fund is $2,153,749. Again, that's our reserve fund. That's not operational money. That's a reserve fund we set aside and is governed by a specific ordinance listing the requirements for the reserve fund. The second page on that document highlighted in orange is our reserve fund balance from June 30, 2021, one year before, and that balance was $1,2,441. This is just to let you know that we did invest, or move, as we discussed, at the close of their fiscal year this year, that we're going to move $250,000 from our reserve, into our reserve fund. This 1.2 million, or the $1,250,000, has our reserve fund fully funded pursuant to the ordinance. Our reserve fund is fully funded through June 30, 2025. So we are ahead of schedule by three years on the reserve fund, which means we're ahead of schedule three years to reach our 20% match, but that's always good news for us and we'll continue to do so as we do that. Our goal is to fund that as quickly as we can and return that portion of money to operations each year. So we're glad that we're able to do that work. The second item I have for you is two staple documents from our bank. It's just a listing of our current checking accounts. These are for your information only. There are some details. I can go over each one of those. We've gone through these before. And again, this is an unaudited number, but I can report to you tonight that with our cash position from June 30, 2021 until June 30, 2022, our cash position has improved by $1.3 million. That is in addition to the reserve fund. The reserve fund's 1.2 million, or $1,253,000. The roughly $1,253,000 or just a little less than that in our cash, a year-end cash balance is separate from our reserve fund. So that's our operational surplus, if you will, that we see in our cash position as of today. Once we get into our amended budget, we will make a couple of changes for this. You may recall that in the fiscal year, it was adopted eighteen months ago now, we included, we stayed at the same property tax rate. I'm sorry, it was adopted last year. We stayed at the same property tax rate. With the discussion that any overage we see, any money that we see over and above what was required for the new debt service, we would reinvest through resurfacing is where we would go. So, once we do the amended budget, either December or early January, we will include a portion of this surplus into resurfacing and they will bid those dollars out in resurfacing so we can reinvest those dollars back into the community through the paving and resurfacing of our streets, as we talked about before. So we are on schedule to do that and look forward to get that work done. So financially, this is an exceptional report. I thought we would be okay. I didn't think we would be this okay. But that's really good news for us and I think being able to see not only dollars in the bank, but actually have those dollars turn into asphalt that we can see and use is a really nice benefit for the city to have. So we look forward to making that investment and getting that work done.
Any questions about the finance report? Public Works?
Public Works report, just briefly. We are midway through the chipper service season. We had a small storm come through about six weeks ago. As you're aware, we do the chipper service the first four Tuesdays of each month. Sounds kind of goofy, but some months have five Tuesdays. So we do, the first four Tuesdays of each month, we divide the city up into quarters. We go do that. We did have a couple of weeks of heavy pickup. I know two weeks ago, the route that we ran for that week took three days of the week to run. We typically run the route in one day. It took three days on that week just because of some debris. You get in some areas where you have lots that don't have mature trees or some other things and when those storms or other debris activity or events take place, you're not affected. Couple of the districts, we are. But we are, we've gotten all that stuff cleaned up. We are experiencing a bit of an issue with the chipper. The chipper's getting some age on it. So, not in this year's budget, but certainly in next year's budget, we'll likely have to purchase from the state bid a new chipper unit to get some work done, just simply exhaust its useful life. We've had it about 15 years. It takes a heavy load. That chipper is designed, we use it for the intent that it's designed for. However, in years past, they use it for a little more than that and it's just showing its age and needs to be replaced. So, we can get through this cycle, but certainly next year, we'll need to get through that cycle. And then, as it relates to the Public Works Department as well, at the next agenda, you'll see that we will be surplusing the bucket truck that we have in Public Works. It simply will not run anymore. The bucket is minimally functional. The truck is not. The city purchased that truck as a surplus purchase from Middle Tennessee Electric several years ago. It's a 1984 model. It has literally been in service nearly 40 years and it's just going to have to be replaced. It will not move. So whoever comes to get it will have to tow it off, but we'll surplus that at the next meeting and then into next year's budget. See if we can find something on state bid to get that vehicle replaced. We use that a lot and we use it a lot when we really need it. So we'll get that piece of equipment out of service, but we'll need to get it replaced as soon as we can.
Any questions? I'm sorry, were you finished with that? Yes, okay.
Okay, I had, I've had, after that storm you spoke about, I've had a few citizens reach out to me and I don't know how to answer this, so I'm just going to ask.
Sure.
So, they've had, you know, there's a few people, especially in Hidden Lakes, that have had several trees fall. And so, they've chopped up those trees and I know that, repeat again, the cubic that they can put like up front.
Yes, so, and I'll speak specifically to that one for what that issue is. And I apologize, I don't remember the specific, the cubic feet, but it's a, the area that we can pick up is a 10-foot by 10-foot square.
10-foot by 10-foot square?
Four feet tall.
Four feet tall.
As it stacked. And it's designed, and that covers 90% of what we see out there in the community. That's worked, kind of worked pretty well for us. The, and it's designed for individual residential services, not designed for commercial. So if you're at your house, you know, and you have limbs or something fall off or you've manicured your lawn or some other thing and you want to take that stuff out, that's our goal, is to pick those things up. Specific to Hidden Lake, that's a different circumstance. I'll explain specifically what that is. If you go to the address where that, and there are two piles of debris, not just one, there are two.
Correct.
If you're facing that house, the debris that you see there did not come from any individual lot in Hidden Lake subdivision. The debris that you see came from the community open space owned by the HOA. Now, there's not an active HOA in that neighborhood and I understand that thing, but it wasn't, it didn't come from an individual lot where a homeowner had some limbs blow off of a tree. In that instance, you had community open space where several trees fell over and damaged other trees and the residents then went out on the community open space, cleared the open space and then removed the community debris to the right-of-way in the yard where you see today. So, as I met with that homeowner, had conversations with them a couple of times, as I explained to him, we simply cannot use the city services to go out and clear up what is a community space in a neighborhood designed for individual homeowner service. It's clearly outside the scope. It's clearly outside the size. Again, the community space is HOA, so in that instance, whoever owns that property would be responsible for their trees falling or damaging other trees or other sites. I get that. So with that specific homeowner, outside of that, I have also offered to him, because it's on one individual's property, although it came from there, they pulled it out to the street. I think he and a neighbor removed it, but they removed it to that. I have offered myself on my own time with my own truck, with my own personal trailer, to go out and remove or help them remove that debris off of their site. I'm just waiting on them to schedule with me a date to do that. So I can't have the city go out and do that work, but I can do that work myself and I've offered to do that on my own time with my own equipment. So as soon as I hear back from them, I'll assist them doing that thing, but I cannot use city equipment to remove it.
And just to also, they had someone come out that tried to help them remove it and I guess they went to the recycle center. They have to have Williamson County tags. They can't get somebody, you know, to go to the recycle center. And also, it can't be more than a truck, they can't get a trailer out there. That's what they tried to do. It has to be a truck that the bed, you know, is, it's not higher than the bed.
That's right.
But the storm made the trees fall onto their fence and part of their playset in the back and so they cut them up, brought them to the front of the house. So I just, I didn't know, my question is, if something happens, say there's a storm and it comes through and they chop up the stuff and bring it to the front of the house, can they do it in two separate loads to make it the 10 by 10 by 4?
Yes. We have no issue doing that. The way, let me back up to the, to that, you're right. They don't, they take a limited amount at the convenience center out at Williamson County. Now, they do not have that same restriction at the locational Pinewood Road.
Okay.
So when you go out and you put something on your trailer or your truck, the convenience center here, at the rec center, does limit you to what you can drop off. And I think it's one trip per resident per day and then whatever you can fit on whatever that thing, and it's limited to Williamson County. However, you can take as much as you can carry out to the Pinewood Road location. If you're a Williamson County resident, they don't charge you for the addition, for the first load. So if you brought in what you would have as a resident, you can bring that in. If you bring more than that, you pay a tipping fee to drop that off or whatever that is. But they do take all of it at the Pinewood Road location, so if that helps. Your second question, can they move that so it's an approved area to be picked up? Absolutely, yes, they can. What they will need to do is do that in such a way that it meets the ordinance. The ordinance that we have for that is that it cannot stay in the right-of-way for longer than two weeks. The reason for that is, if it stays there longer than two weeks, from a personnel perspective, the difficulty for staying out there for longer than two weeks is if you get grass that grows through it, any other thing, then you're subject to injuring an employee. If they're trying to pull shrubs, debris, or any other thing through grown grass, that can be difficult to do. From the public health side of it, I know from personal experience that I've had more than one snake fall on me when you're picking up debris out there and doing that thing. I had a rat crawl in my boot from doing that thing. So when you're out there, when those things sit out there in the summertime, that's a shaded area for animals and critters and they get out there. So we don't allow them to leave it out for more than two weeks so it doesn't become a health hazard for the community or an employee hazard to remove it. But as long as they put that out there and it doesn't exceed the two weeks, yes, they absolutely can do that. We'll be glad to pick up as many as they can.
So they could just leave part of it in the back, bring out the 10 by 10 by 4 and wait?
Absolutely, yes. We would encourage them to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm presuming that the information about the size is still on the website?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Is that, are we ready for the city manager's report?
Yes, ma'am. On the city manager's report, I want to kind of go over something. This matter's been brought up a couple of times. I want to kind of go through, go through this. But I've provided to each of you a copy of ordinance number 2019-22. Ordinance 2019-22 is the city's burn ordinance. We've had a couple of questions about what can be burned, what can't be burned, how, when, or where does it work, all of those things that take place. So what you have tonight, the first two pages are the actual ordinance. The ordinance was approved in September 2019 and it states specifically the provisions for materials that can be burned in the city of Fairview. And I'll be glad to read down each one of these, but I don't think that's the important part of the discussion. I think the important part of the discussion has been the permitting process and what is included in the permitting. And again, I can read down each one of these, but this is pretty standard and it regulates most of everything that can be burned, how, where, all of those particulars. With that, we do require for anything other than paragraph seven, and if you'll look to the back page of this on paragraph seven, paragraph seven is specific to residential. And paragraph seven states, "Nothing in this chapter shall prevent any business or resident from burning a recreational campfire, fire pit, fireplace, or grill, and no permit shall be required for such campfire, fire pit, fireplace, or grill." So if someone simply has a fire pit in their backyard, they're not burning debris, they just have a regular fire pit, grill, any other thing, the resident's not required to come and get a permit for that. Anything outside of that scope, they are required to get a permit for. So the last page that I have for you is that actual permit application, or the permit. So what happens when someone comes to get a permit, a developer, contractor, whomever, they come in to get a permit and our fire department goes down this checklist with the applicant. We go down, they go 1 through 18, they read this through them, they make sure that everything they're attempting to do or burn or any activity they're looking to a agent is understood through this permit and you'll see at the bottom, there's a place for them to sign and date and check that they understand the permit requirements. Once this is done, before a permit is issued, our fire department then goes out and inspects the site where they state they're going to burn. So we don't just, okay, thank you and accept this thing. When we get this and it's complete, we don't issue the permit yet. We go out and inspect the site and make sure that where they're saying they're going to burn and what they're saying they're going to burn is actually true. We then, before we issue the permit, check with the National Weather Service. There are some concerns on here regarding wind conditions, other things. So before we issue the permit, we check with the National Weather Service to make sure there's nothing in the forecast that will exceed the requirements set forth in this permit. If the site matches and if the location is as described and materials to be burned are as described and the weather conditions are favorable as outlined in this document, then the city will issue that burn permit and it's valid for the number of days or events specified in the ordinance that you have before you. So our fire department goes by the ordinance that we have. We then go down the checklist for the permit. We inspect the site, make sure that it meets the requirements, check the weather to make sure there are no weather hazards that are going to be of ill effect. Once that is done and everything's suitable, then we issue the permit. So I know there's been some question about how we do that and that's exactly how we do it. But I thought it was important to have the conversation, so if there are any questions about how we do that generally or what the contents of the ordinance are, then we have that information here to kind of walk through. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can. If I cannot, then I'll get with our fire department, make sure we get those back out. But that is a general overview of our fire, our burn ordinance and the permitting process.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins, number 14 says that the burn permit may require the specialized equipment such as trenches and air curtains as required by the fire chief or fire marshal.
Correct.
Can you talk just a little bit of when we may require an air curtain or trench?
So, and I know you're probably aware of this, but for me and you are, an air curtain really isn't what it sounds like, okay? An air curtain can be really one of two things. An air curtain itself can be a portable, all-encompassing unit and the best way I can describe it for you is the large dumpsters that you see out at the... you is, the large dumpsters that you see out at the, behind the rec center, or the convenience center is, where you put your debris for all that stuff. An air curtain can be one of, a, a, a large item similar to that, it's insulated on three sides, so you can burn within it. In a one end of that, typically you have an engine that blows a fan and infuses fire into that, that box. So what happens is, you put your debris in there, you light it, and it supercharges that fire, heats it up, so it's really a re-burner of the items, right? So if you put a log stump, whatever you put in there, it's going to burn that at such a high temperature that it burns any remnants as well. So that's a portable unit, so you can put those on a portable site somewhere, put your burn items in there, light it, start up that thing, it supercharges with air, it increases the heat of the fire, and it's a cleaner burn, generally. The second one of those is not an all-encompassing unit, but it's really a glorified fan. So what happens in this is, you take, you would dig a pit that would be similar in, on your site, similar in size to what that container would be, okay? So we've basically taken this container, moved it to a similar hole, similar size and shape, and then the air curtain that comes in is on a trailer, there's an arm that extends out, and it has a bar on it that is basically the width or length of the pit that you've dug. You burn your materials in that pit, and that pit is then supercharged by the air that's blown into it by that portable device. It blows air into one side, circulates the air within the hole, or the pit, does the same thing for supercharging the air as you would on an, on an all-in-one unit. It supercharges the air and burns it, simply adds air, adds heat, the fire burns at a hotter temperature and burns cleaner. That's really an air curtain in layman's terms. To answer your question, those would typically be used if you have, if you have a large amount of debris to burn on a condensed site. As an example, you're in the middle of a neighborhood where the neighborhood is complete, and you're burning debris from the five interior most lots in a subdivision, okay? Let's take Cumberland Estates. We've all been to Cumberland Estates. Let's say that the center, three acres of Cumberland Estates, has yet to be cleared, and there's going to be debris to be burned. In that instance, it would make sense to have an air curtain, either portable or in an all-enclosed unit, so you would not disturb that neighborhood, because clearly you're in the center of a, of a defined area. The other use would be typically commercial. So if I'm in a commercial area or other place, where I don't want to disturb that commercial area, you could use that air curtain in that site, so you keep all of that, that area done. An example would be what hopefully will be built next door. You build the shopping center, you build a commercial area, you're doing this thing, it's full and complete, except for there's a section of that commercial area that's yet to be cleared and developed. You would then move, you could move that there, so that burning does not disrupt the commercial area activity, generally. A school parking lot, construction area, something like that would make sense. On a larger area, where you have plenty of room to burn, they simply don't make sense because they don't make any, any difference in the effect of that thing. If I have a 50-acre site, and I'm burning in the, in the 50-acre site, and I'm not going to be generally any more affected in that 50-acre site if I'm 300 yards away from it, than I would if I have an air curtain for something that's 100 feet from me. So typically, the larger site, the large, or more remote the site is, the lesser the need is, generally, to employ an air curtain in that, in that burn. Not to say that there wouldn't be conditions where they, where they could be. If you have a site that's going to be burned, and you know it's, as a part of the site being developed, you know it's right up against another developed area, you could request that. If you have adverse weather conditions, substantial heat, or if the area that you're, you're clearing, even though you're a large area away, if you have burnable material between that burn site and the nearest place. An example would be, if I have 50 acres that I'm doing work on, and my burn spot is surrounded in the middle of a hayfield, then particulates from that fire, embers from that fire, if they were to escape, could set that hayfield on fire, and then we'd get a larger issue. If I have 50 acres that's 30 acres of dirt, 20 acres of dirt, or I'm in an area where the effect of an ember escaping and landing in the ground is likely not going to somehow another cause a fire of a larger scale, then you simply wouldn't employ the air curtain. So I hope I've.
No, that, that makes complete sense, and so looking at some of the burn ordinance in the area, and it also varies wildly, these burn ordinance.
Sure.
In, in some cities, there, you cannot open burn. In some cities, you have to have an air curtain every time, and then in some cities, it's up to the fire marshal or fire chief to make that determination.
Right.
What about if, if we have a situation where public health, somebody has a medical condition, asthma, COPD, what options does the fire chief have at that point?
Yeah, so, so really, we don't. And I'll tell you why. If you, if you go back to the item in the, in the checklist, and I'll get down to number five. Number five states specifically, "No fire shall cause a hazard to health or safety of others from fire or smoke emissions." Now, obviously, we're the fire department, we're not doctors, we're not scientists, we're not all of those things with that. So as a part of this, it also says that only natural materials can be burned, right? So if, if that's what we're looking at, we, we don't have the ability to go out there and test or determine what is going to be an individual inconvenience to another person who's, who is experiencing one of those, one of those health conditions. Now, obviously, the burn sites are designed in such a way to where they would be removed far enough that it not be there. But we, as a city, don't have the ability or expertise to determine what is going to cause specific inconveniences for specific illnesses off-site. If someone could present that, and, and I would suggest that they, they can express that concern, and we'll be glad to express that out, but beyond that, we would just have to get, get some further qualification on what they specifically state the health hazard is, and some provable point to that. Now, I will tell you that on most bridges in Williamson County, and there are bridges adjacent or near this property that have this, Williamson County does employ air quality meters on the majority of its bridges in the county. So when we get a complaint for some of these things, we do have the ability, and have in instances recently, gone back and pulled the air quality data from those air quality meters, and we observed no hazard from the air quality meters that are employed by Williamson County throughout the county and near the, near the sites within the city. So with that, we can use those meters, that's going to give us some information, but beyond that, it's going to be up to the complainant to demonstrate the specific health hazard, and why that can't be mitigated by them on their part.
So my thoughts on this, and this is just general comment, especially when we have a, a large area being burned off, and they're utilizing this, this permit for open burning, you know, obviously, to your point, this air curtain creates this fire that, that accelerates the fire, right? So what could take a month long to burn, and it would be some, more of a nuisance, could take maybe half of that time with, with an ordinance that incorporates this, this air curtain, for example. So I, I would, and I don't know how we do this, but I would like to visit, first of all, in communities like size in the, the current area, what is everybody doing, or what are they, what is their burn regulation? And as we grow, as our usable area gets smaller and smaller, which means we're burning closer and closer to subdivisions, how are we going to mitigate this? Do we, at some point, change our open burning ordinance to say, okay, we're going to have to use an air curtain at this point, we're going to have to mitigate that a little bit tighter? And exactly, if somebody does have asthma, do they have to have a physician's recommendation? When, when is that stopping point to say, okay, we've got to shut it down? The fire chief has the availability to, to stop the burn for atmospheric conditions, for example. Does that atmospheric condition mean where there is visible smoke in, in a, in a, in a neighborhood that's right next to the burn, giving the fire chief a little bit more of that latitude? So I, I think we're going to have to revisit this at some point. I, I know that we've, we've received a lot of complaints about the burning in some subdivisions. Is this long-term nuisance, months and months of burning? What can we do without putting a significant strain on the developer, where it's going to cost that developer thousands and thousands of dollars, which is going to be passed on to the purchaser of that home? But how can we negotiate that deal where both people are going to win at that point? So I guess my suggestion is, can, can we look across the board? What are neighboring cities, communities doing with their burn ordinance? And what do we need to look at in the future to make sure that we're being responsible to our constituents that, that live here in a subdivision, and, and the developers that are using this burn ordinance?
Sure. So, so when, I can report to you that when we revised the ordinance in 2019, we did just that. The fire department put a pretty extensive effort into going and figuring out what makes sense for Fairview, as it relates and compares to what's happening regionally, and this document is what you see was a result of that, of that study. So we're confident that, that this meets most of what, what you've described. As it relates to an amendment of the ordinance mandating air curtains or, or similar, the fire department, the, the staff and I there are completely indifferent to that. If that was a privilege of the board, and the board chose to, to adopt the ordinance that says that's going to be the requirement, then so be it, that's the requirement. We're not, we're not proposing it, we're not opposed to it, we're certainly open to whatever that is. We, we're, again, at the staff level, you see all sides of every argument for everything, and somewhere in the middle is where you are. But for us, we are totally indifferent to that. If the board came back and says, we want to amend the ordinance where air curtains are required regardless, and so be it, there's, there's no issue, we're not going to fuss about that. If the ordinance stays exactly the same, we're, we're fine with that, too. Part of the issue that we've had recently is not with the burning of the fire, so to speak. What we've run into recently is attempted efforts to tend certain fires on, on site. As you know, and as most, as most of us know, we've seen some of this stuff before, the preference should be, again, no air curtain, no thing, you, you set this thing on fire, you do, you meet the code, whatever it is, and then you leave it until the burn is terminated, whether it burns out, or whatever case it is, it burns down. You leave it until the burn is complete. What's happened, or recently, as in fact happened today, this morning, is not an issue with the burn, the fire itself, but tending the burn. Because what happens is, when you disturb the burn, either you attempt to put it out, or you attempt to move items around it, it's the same as if you have a fire pit in your backyard, or a grill in your backyard. Once you move it or adjust it, those embers, debris, anything else, or debris, debris particles are going to then elevate and make their way out, where if you would just simply leave it and let it burn, you remedy most of that. So with that, we try to educate our applicants as much as we can, that that's the preference to do that. That takes care of most of what we have. But again, if the board came, came back and said that you want to amend it to include air curtains are mandatory, absolutely not an issue for us. We just change a lot of them in the ordinance, call the roll, and, and that becomes the ordinance. So we're, we're pleased to do either.
Okay. Sounds like, so it sounds like you guys have researched this, thought, effort went into this burn ordinance, and if the fire chief still has that information, you know, what does that look like around us for like cities? Would love to see that information, too. So if Brentwood, for example, they don't have an opening, open burn ordinance at all, versus Franklin, versus Columbia, it would be great to see that. I think that would give us some really good information to go by.
Yeah. And, and specifically Brentwood or some others, we're, we're in a little bit different.
Sure.
Brent, Brent, obviously, they're very little commercial in Brentwood, they're, they're mostly residential. As it relates to somewhere like Brentwood specifically, their minimum lot size is one acre. So what happens in somewhere like Brentwood, if you're kind of comparing apples to apples, what happens to somewhere in Brentwood is, you're going to get, someone is going to come in to an already populated area, and they're going to clear two or three acres to build two or three houses. And when they detree those or deforest, deforest those, they're going to require an air curtain, because you're putting, you're burning three acres of debris in, in a residential subdivision that is clearly just that thing.
Right.
So because they have the minimum lot size of one acre, their growth pattern is substantially different.
Yeah.
Than what Fairview's is. On Fairview's, when you don't have the minimum one-acre lot, and they come in, that burn pattern's substantially different. So for us, it just comes down to the preference by this board for an air curtain or not an air curtain.
Yeah.
And, and again, we're, we're certainly open to, if that's what the board decided wanted to do, not a problem. If they want to lead the same, we're, we're open to that thing. But part of the comparing the apples to apples goes a little bit beyond what the fire department requires, or what their burn ordinance does, and it comes down to what their zoning allows as far as lot sizes and commercial uses. So that, you kind of get a little more, kind of, not off in the weeds, so to speak, but it's very difficult to compare those things. So for us, we're, we're fine with whichever way the, the board wants to go, but I know when we investigated it, we came down to the air curtain discussion, and it simply was, because of the large size and scope of the typical development in Fairview, they didn't, they weren't practical to mandate. Outside of that, if the board chose to do that, then, then certainly no issue for us at all. So just let us know your preference, we'll be glad to do it.
I have a question about the air curtain.
Yes.
So I'm presuming that if this board decides to cause that to happen for every burn, that that would also apply to homeowners, not just developers? So if, if a tree falls in my yard from a storm, and I burn the tree, then I have to have an air curtain?
Well, burn, burning the tree now is currently not allowed. They would not be allowed, if a tree falls in their yard, they're not allowed to burn it, it has to be hauled off. Again, on paragraph seven, paragraph seven on the ordinance states specifically what a homeowner can burn, and it states, "A resident, 'Nothing in this chapter shall prevent any business or resident from burning a recreational campfire, fire pit, fireplace, or grill, and no permit shall be required for such campfire, fire pit, fireplace, or grill.'" Anything larger and greater than that does require a permit. So if they were to have a tree fall on their yard, and it was their preference to burn that, then they would have to have, they're not allowed to burn it now, they would have to have a burn permit.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to have an air curtain.
Okay.
Now, on page one, there are some other specifics, specifically in paragraph three, that outline where those things can be burned, in addition to what can be burned. Item 3A, "Fire not contained in waste burn structure, air curtain, device or facility, ditch or trench, shall be no less than 50 feet from any structure, and with adequate provisions to prevent the fire from spreading within 50 feet of any structure." So typically, you're going to be within 50 feet of your home, out parcel, or a neighbor's building, if you're burning something in your yard, that's where the 50-foot requirement comes in. 3B, "Fire contained in a waste burn structure, device, or facility shall be no less than 15 feet away from any structure, and with adequate provisions to prevent the fire from spreading to within 15 feet of any structure." So that's outside of that. So it's going to be very difficult for anyone on a single-family residential lot in the City of Fairview to burn anything other than a recreational campfire or similar under the ordinance. So the only thing that would generally be affected would be a development site.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay. So does this, because I don't know a whole lot about air curtains, does this prevent ash or smoke leaving the site and affecting neighboring?
It aids in the prevention, but it's not going to completely.
Is there anything out there that would completely contain any of that?
No burning. That's the only thing, there's always going to be, there's always going to be a possibility for something to escape.
So the communities that don't allow burning, how do they go about removing large amounts of trees from sites?
I have no idea. They have to haul them off.
Haul them off?
Sure.
Okay. Like you said, the air curtain at least would speed up the process, where it wouldn't be long and drawn out? Is that what you're understanding?
It burns hot. It burns hotter and quicker, for sure.
A lot hotter and quicker. I would like to see that if we have large areas of burn, that we do require an air curtain, but that will be something we could, you know, bring to a meeting. Item number six, no fire shall be left unattended at any time.
Correct.
What is the consequence or who monitors that?
The fire department, we don't go and actively visit site to site, right? So we're not, we're not going out and monitoring them 24 hours a day to see if there's someone out there. Now, we do encounter them, we do go out, we don't make routine visits of those because once they get their permits, it's their responsibility to make sure that happens. If we're made aware of it or if we observe it, then we have the opportunity to extinguish the fire and pull the permit.
So if there's a burn going on and it is left unattended?
Sure, we can put it out.
We can have the fire extinguished and pull the permit?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good to know. Also, recently, there was a ban on burning.
Right.
And is there anywhere on our website or somewhere that people are able to look up and be aware, you're allowed to burn right now, there's a ban on burning? Is there anywhere that they can find that out?
Yeah, so generally, that's, we're going to mirror what the state fire marshal does. So if the state fire marshal has instituted a ban, then our fire chief is not going to issue a burn permit until that fire, that ban is lifted for whatever reason. And they can also find that information when they come and apply for the burn permit.
Okay, so if it's just an individual and they want to know if there's a ban on burning right now, how would they, how would they find that out?
Call the fire department. That's the best, easiest way to do it, is just call the fire department.
And if we mimic what the state regulation is for the time, what if part of our, and this is just because, just I'm trying to gather information, what if part of the state is flooding and part of the state's in a drought? How does that work?
So typically, the state fire marshal will issue areas of concern. If it's a statewide issue, there's a drought statewide, they're going to issue a statewide, a statewide ban. If it's the middle Tennessee, they may name the number, they may name the individual counties for how, for how that is. So typically, they're going to err on the side of caution, and if there's an, there's an area that the ban is going to be in place, then they will, they will go outside of that footprint greater to do that thing. And then when they lift it, it will be for, for the entire area. So they're, they don't, they don't take any consideration, well, it's raining Gatlinburg, but, so we're going to lift the burn regulation, although Williamson County's drying out, right? They're going to, they're going to monitor the weather service just like everyone else does, and they're going to issue those bans or guidances regionally specific. If that's the entire state, it's the entire state. If it's west Tennessee, or east Tennessee, or middle Tennessee, or specific number of counties that have taken place, you know, if you go back and look at the, if you go back and look at the weather service, you can, you can look at certain areas and determine whether or not, just because there's been rain in an area, Williamson County could still be incredibly dry. So at that point, you would simply, you could lift the ban except for Williamson County, Davidson County, wherever you need to do to make sure that there's some protection of that. But the state's pretty good about making sure that they are regionally sensitive to their bans and lifting of those bans.
Okay, so more, we would probably follow state, and then the state would kind of over, look over the different counties as to what's going on in those counties.
I'm not, I'm not staying there looking over individual counties because I don't think that's their purview. I think they look at regions and determine where regions of threat would be, and then they'll lift their bans, or they'll install their bans or guidances on those regions.
I just know that there could, you know, there could be flooding one place and really a drought in another place, so regions make sense.
And my guess is they're going to err on the side of caution and issue bans in a greater area than they believe the fire needs to be banned, and not lift the ban because one area of the state got rain. They're going to always err on the side of caution against the risk.
And so if we call our fire department, anyone in that fire department should know if there's a ban?
I can't tell you that anyone in the fire department, but typically, there's going to be a supervisor on staff that will be able to assist that caller with that information.
Okay.
Hopefully, that answers.
Is that your, are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Since I skipped you, I'm not sure that I gave you?
No, I'm perfectly fine.
Item 11, new business, Board of Zoning Appeals appointment, there's one open seat. Ms. Johnson, do we have an applicant? Is that a no?
Mr. Collins? I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, there was an interest in the one seat, who?
Sorry, I was switching gears on fire.
Mr. Anderson?
Mike Anderson.
Yes, thank you.
I believe Mr. Anderson is currently on the planning commission, and there was discussion in the past about having any individual not serve on more than one board. And if Mr. Anderson was appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, then he'll be on the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we would encourage against that. First, because of serving on more than one board.
Right.
Secondly, the concern would be, as we've described in the past, the Board of Zoning Appeals can be, in some instances, an appellate board to the planning commission. And I believe it would be not favorable to an applicant to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they're having administrative hearings, and the people administering that hearing, administering that hearing sit on the board that they're appealing a decision of. So in that instance, I would suggest that we don't feel it with Mr. Anderson unless he chose to come off one of the board. Outside of that, we'll just have to continue to advertise until it can get seafilled.
Okay. 11B, resolution 21-22, Vice Mayor.
11B, resolution 21-22, a resolution of the City of Fairview, accepting the lowest bid for culvert replacement on Sutton Drive.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Same.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
Mayor, just briefly, this, this matter's been before the city for several years now. Part of the difficulty with this site specifically was the depth of the existing pipe. This is not something that the city could go and do their work with. There's a substantial drop in elevation from where the pipe begins upstream to where it ends downstream, and it runs under a road, and so there's some other technical challenges with this site. So that was the purpose for bidding it out. Second, I'll let you know that this is the first project that we will undergo for stormwater that will be paid for through the American Recovery Plan grant money that we received. As you recall, we're working on a stormwater project, our management plan throughout the city, and this is the first project for those funds throughout the city. So we look forward to getting that system started and getting this work complete.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rannie?
Aye.
11C, Communications from Parks and Landscaping Board, Vice Mayor.
Okay, on behalf of the Parks and Landscape Board, Chairman Scott McCoy, and I am also a member of that board, we have a few items from our meeting that we need a little bit of assistance with. First of all, we would like to have another event we've had in the past that was very successful. It was our Pictures with Santa, and our board was looking at maybe possibly doing that the morning of the tree lighting. So that's just kind of, you know, something we'd like to check into to see if that would work.
So my initial question, my initial answer is, I don't know, but I'd be glad to try and find out.
Okay. And then our second item is, we would love to be able to have our meetings the first Monday of every month at the Triangle School. So just a little, you know, help with that as far as opening and closing the school, if it's a member of the board, or staff, or your, you know, your comments about that as far as, you know, the proper way to handle that.
Yeah, we're, staff's indifferent to it. Commissioner Anderson, we would just, obviously, we have to figure out, if it's the first Monday of every month, then we would just have to figure out, establish a meeting start time and stop time because we do have to schedule staff to open that up. So however, we did it, we're fine with it, we just need to identify kind of what that window of time would be.
And you're seeing that as, like, it has to be a staff member open and close in the building?
Yes, and I'll tell you why. When we're trying to do that, and there've been instances in the past where we, we've tried to allow for other things, but, and I guess we could try to work through that. Our concern is, if there's going to be an evening time, how are we to make sure the lights are on, the lights are off, all those things that take place? So we could probably work within some parameters, depending on the time of year and how that stuff works, we just need to identify what the specific responsibilities of who does that, and then the location of the keys, because we would not distribute a key. We would make sure that that key is picked up, returned, and do all those things, so we can maintain the security of the building. But within that, we could...
So that we don't interrupt someone's evening sleep time, something like that? Me being on the board, would that not be a proper way for me to open and close the building?
We, we're, again, we don't, we don't mind that at all, we just have to go through and determine the access to the key and that sort of thing to make. But again, we'll be glad to work with how we count on that.
Typically, Monday, 7 to 9.
Right.
Typically, is what we meet. So we can, we can discuss that.
Yeah, we'll be glad to help.
Also, there's been some maintenance and some, some maintenance and also some items that needed repair at the building, and we are really glad that things are being maintained and repaired. But we have to be very careful about the historical integrity, especially at the school, because it's, it was a very long, hard process, which I was involved in, of getting that school put on the historic register for Tennessee. And if there are items such as the columns, which they will have to be replaced because they don't meet that integrity, we could be taken off the historic register, and we would have to reimburse, and we've already been told this, reimburse the state of Tennessee for the matching grant that they provided for us to be able to restore the school.
Sure.
So that's just something we need to kind of be aware of, that if any addition or anything that has to be rebuilt, or, you know, something that's fallen apart that has to be, you know, fixed, somebody just needs, that has the, you know, knowledge of historical buildings, needs to kind of oversee that.
Yeah, so, and I can answer that specifically. I believe what you're talking about are the columns at the doctor's office, maybe?
I believe they're at the school, they're at the Triangle School.
I don't recall those replacing at the school. I believe there's some in the building next to it, where we replaced some steps.
The steps were at the, at the post office.
And the columns were as well.
Okay, okay.
So...
I'll check into that, because I was thinking there was some columns.
We haven't, we haven't done those, but I'll tell you how we arrived at there and what the issue is for that. So, and I would argue the state, if they want to accept the liability for failing steps and failing walkway at the front of the building, then I would be glad to give them that responsibility. For us, we bid the project out, we had a contractor come in, give us the work, so we could get as close to what was historically accurate as we could. With that, there was a greater safety concern for the failing steps as you walk across, the steps to the front, the planks that led you from the steps to the door itself, and specifically, one of the columns on the right-hand side, there was an issue from that. So we decided to err on the side of caution, accept the biz that we could to get the structure safe. And when we go back and do a remediation of any other sites like that, where there's not a safety issue, but an overall aesthetic or period compliance issue, then we would follow up on all that one time. But our first and foremost instant was that in the absence of being able to have someone to go back and make it historically accurate, we wanted to make it safe. And that's how, that's how we arrived there.
I think we can do both.
So...
Because there are columns that are historically accurate that would be safe.
Sure.
Steps, or...
Not, not, not saying there aren't, just saying when we went through the bid process to do all that stuff, that's how we arrived at the work that we did.
Okay, and I mean, it's very appreciated, it's just that, you know, I would just, I would just say the columns really need to be revisited, but we can talk about that later.
Sure.
So that's, that's all I have, and we'll just, every month that we meet, I will get with Brandy to put on our report, just so we can, you know, give a report every time we...
Yeah, totally, up to the board, too.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just a random note, I know in times past in the Parks or Trees meeting, there was a liaison from staff, maybe that new position could maybe be a part of that meeting to help with Pictures with Santa and stuff like that?
Could you start that over one more time? I'm sorry, I was looking at notes and...
In the past, the Tree Board or the Parks Board, which is now adjourned as one, had a liaison from staff that's had in the meetings, so maybe it could help bring back Pictures with Santa or things like that to, you know, back to the staff. So maybe the new position we're hiring, or I don't want to nominate anybody, but it could maybe attend that meeting in the future to help...
Yeah, I think that would...
Transfer and liaison back and forth from.
Yeah, I think, once we get that person hired, we've had a couple of applications, but we, we need to continue with the advertising process. But once we do that, we'll be able to, to get that. Part of our issue with staffing now is just the sheer number of hours, the individual employees work, and keep up with some of that stuff. So, but as soon as we can get that position filled, I think it'd be great.
It's just good to have that bridge, for them to bring it back, yeah.
Sure.
Item 12, Communications from the Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to RTC very much for the presentation of the colors tonight, and thank you for, to the Legion for coming out and for continuing to support several local, local groups. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just want to give a big congratulations to Chris Butler. He is a Fairview graduate, he was just named our new principal of Fairview High School. He is just a wonderful person who really takes our students', you know, education to heart and really supports them, so I just want to congratulate him. He was just named our new principal. Thank you to everyone who had a hand in the July 3rd celebration. I tell you, I've, I've never seen as many people. It was, it was large and very successful, so, you know, it's just been, it was a really great event, so I'm, I just want to thank everybody who had a hand in that. Let's see, thank you to the JORTC for coming out and doing the colors tonight and our pledge, also to the Legion for raising funds and doing, you know, their scholarships and donating money to really worthy causes out here. As always, our community is beautiful, let's help keep it that way by picking up trash whenever you can and not throwing it out. Thank you.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nothing to that, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a quick statement. I just wanted to thank the Park Operational Plan Committee for the work that they've done over the past nine months. This committee is passionately known as the POPSE Committee. This committee has worked and met with the Aquine Community, the Fairview Historical Society, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, coordinators and director of Parks in Davidson and Williamson Counties, Williamson County Parks and Rec, and the American Legion. We've also talked with countless Fairview citizens regarding what they would like to see in the park system. The POPSE has submitted three recommendations to the BOC. Number one, funding the park system, which we discussed in the work session tonight with building permits. Number two, to reinstate the park coordinator position, which the city is in the process of finding that right candidate. And then three, contract with the firm to assist the POPSE and the city in developing a comprehensive master plan for the park. Resolution 1821 states, the tasks for the Park Operational Plan Committee is to present the Board of Commissioners a consolidated city park operational plan that will consist of a proposed operational plan for each park property. This operational plan has not been submitted by the POPSE Committee to the city as of yet. I would like to propose for the POPSE to be the citizen committee assigned to the firm developing the park master plan for the city of Fairview. I believe this is still in the scope of resolution 18-21. I would also propose, once this, once this comprehensive park master plan is turned over to the BOC... comprehensive park master plan is turned over to the B O C, this would conclude the business of the Park Operational Plan Committee, and the committee would be resolved. So that is what I would like to present to the Board of Commissioners tonight, and to continue on with the P O P C Committee.
Could we have that in writing so we could read it and table that until the next meeting to look at?
Is that something that we have to vote on, or it's, continues to be in the resolution?
I think if the, if the effort was to have the Park Operational Plan Committee be the city's committee for the master plan specifically, I think that would, that would need to be, I think that need to be a resolution form. Simply because as, as it is now, the park master plan is deliverable to the Board of Commissioners. So if there was going to be an effort by the, by the Board or anyone else to have that be delivered to another agency or group, or have that group be responsible for the direction of that, so to speak, I guess, or the collection, or however that would be, I think that would need to be somehow included in a resolution, even if it's a simple amendment to the existing resolution.
Okay. Okay. I'll draw that up for next meeting. Thank you. And then, I would, I would like to see a B O C project list that we keep on the board every B O C meeting. So if, for example, a commissioner has a request, or something that we have the city work on, that we have an ongoing list that we can give updates on that list every B O C meeting. So if we make a recommendation, or if we ask about something, we can ask to put it on that list, and we just keep that running list. Once the, the issue or the, the ask is resolved, we take it off that list. I think it would help us kind of organize the, the requests, the asks, and so forth. Is that something we can, is that something that we would put in the, the agenda, or how, how could we have that list?
Yeah, so, so I think there would need to have to be some parameters of what that list is.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how to, how to craft that.
Okay.
And then we'd also have to figure out how, how is that managed?
Right.
Because as you can imagine, we're, we are, the staff is pretty overwhelmed at this point right now. Not saying that we can't do it.
Sure.
But we would have to have some parameters for what we're talking about on this list, and how this report's done, and all of that, because that could be, that could be a task in and of its own.
Sure, sure.
So.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I think, though, we are, we're, we're missing opportunities where we will have a full discussion about an item, and it, it just, we, we don't bring it up again. And I, I guess if we need to make an, an, an agenda item every time, we, we can do that as well. I think we're missing out, and for example, and, and you're right, Mr. Collins, we know you guys are extremely busy, and we need to make sure that we concentrate on the big nuggets. The discussion that we had, though, about the employee incentive from the B O C, that program, that was, it, it's something that we talked about, we spent time on, but just because of everything else, it kind of got lost. That was, that's an item that I would like to see on our, on our list, to make sure that we continue through with that. And if that needs to be in an agenda item, so we don't lose sight of it, we can certainly do that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, so I would argue, we haven't lost sight of that.
Okay.
You, you may recall, you sat in on a meeting where the department heads gave your feedback, gave you feedback toward that thing. And I believe outside of that meeting, you've met with several of them and pitched that idea to them.
I did.
And got kind of similar results from, from those conversations. That said, it was, is my understanding, it was left to, at that point, the discussion that was had, although not voted on by resolution, was that the staff was to quarterly provide a name to the Board of Commissioners, that the staff was to select from the staff, from the department heads, was to select an employee worthy of that recognition and present that, that staff member to the board. I'm not aware of anything any different.
Yeah. So I, I guess the question is, what is the progress of, or what is the development of, of the request of the item? And once again, just reporting back, where, where are we at with that, that item?
Sure.
And I think if we, we have it on the agenda, we, we actually vote on it, we, we have action. Some things are not necessarily relevant to the agenda-
Sure.
-but they, they just get lost. And if, if we had this parking lot or this communication spot that we could just make sure that we, it's, we, it's relevant enough, and we either get an update or we take it off the list. And to your point, we, we need to make sure it's, it's important enough to be on that list. So would it be easier for us, then, just to, to make that an agenda item, or how, how could we, just for all of our accountability?
Yeah, you can make it whatever you want. I, I don't, again, that's, that's a privilege of the Board to do that thing. I don't, I don't know how we would catalog that, categorize that, I don't know how we would prioritize those. But certainly, if the Board chose to, to do that, then we would work the best we can to make sure we fulfill that-
Okay.
-that question. I think, I think a random update of items that have been discussed, I can start that right now. We're going to leave about 11:30. And that's not me being a jerk, that's just me, I don't mean, I mean, there's a lot that goes on. So I'm not, I'm not implying that, I'm saying we can-
Thus, thus that list where it's important enough for us to have it on that list. And, and you're right, we've got a thousand things we can talk about.
I would, I would just encourage you to craft the list.
Okay. I would like to know what everybody else on the Board thinks, or-
Well, I guess my first question would be, what was the feedback from the staff? And if the staff has been told for the, for the heads, department heads, to give us a name, then it seems that we've done all we can do until a department head turns in a name?
Yeah, so generally, the staff was against it. Just general terms. I know Commissioner Dawson is aware of that. That said, that was the request to do so. What we left it with the staff was, we'll assign a quarterly date. If, if you recall specifically, that request was done for, what would, we even had the specific discussion about that will be a part of the budget year that began July 1. The question even was funding that discussion. So we are right now, two weeks into the budget year that began July 1. So the staff and I have left it as, once we get to the end of the first quarter, like it or not, we'll put that together, present that to the Board, and the Board can, can move forward.
I don't think I'd heard the feedback that the staff was against it.
I'm sorry?
I had not heard the feedback that the staff was against the program. So the staff is against the pro, doing that?
Listen, just generally.
Okay.
Historical. We have a really, really, really good staff. We have a really good staff here today. I would love to point one or two of them out, but the difficulty is, we have a good group of staff across the board. Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, Planning, Engineering, all, all of that group. I've been in this business a long time. I, I don't know that I could go back and pick a better group for what they do and how they do it. I think all of this discussion was brought about by a Facebook post that was put on the Fire Department's post about an internal award that was given to a group of firefighters, to a couple of firefighters. I think is what the genesis of this discussion was, is, is a practical matter. When we had the discussions with department heads, with staff, with the group, the general consensus was that their appreciation was, and their intent was not to be recognized, because that believed, they believed that kind of lessened the value of what they did intrinsically. I, I believe they very much are suited to come to work, do their job, be their best, contribute as they can to the city. And knowing that as a group collectively and intrinsically, that's, that's what fuels them to, to do that task. We don't have a group that has to be motivated, so to speak. Not that they don't appreciate the recognition or knowledge, but what was expressed to me was, they would greater appreciate the expression when you see them at the grocery store, when you're at City Hall, when you're out running an air and you can stop by the Fire Department for two minutes, when you see them on the side of the road mowing or cutting grass. That, that was overwhelmingly the response. They very much appreciate that, but they believe their value in doing what they do is to do it well and do it invisibly. That, that was just the feedback that we got.
And let me give you a little bit of color. So the meeting, the ask was that we asked the director to pick somebody in the Fire Department, or all of these departments, who they thought should get this award, and, and there was pushback. And the reason that they said, that, listen, we, I shouldn't have to pick one individual, what about the, the 35 individuals, or the 18 individuals that I have in the Fire Department, which we came to a understanding, then the employees, all of the employees, would suggest a name for the employee of the month. And then everybody agreed with that. So-
And then, and then the discussion was that the staff, we take three, and the, the department heads pick the, the person to be presented.
No, that's not correct. That was the initial, and that was the pushback from the directors saying, that's not going to work, we're going to make people mad doing that.
Right.
Allow the employees to suggest who those three people, or one person, whatever. That is what came back at last, and that's what made everybody happy or agree to the program. You know, it, it's one of those things, and if you look across the United States, employee incentive is big. And I know, I, I've, I've been a firefighter for almost 30 years. It, it is great, and most of these people are hu, all of them are humble servants. They don't need the recognition, but it's nice to have that recognition. The family members, they love to see their, their firefighter, their police officer, their Public Works employee have that recognition. So it, it is important. It's, it's important that we recognize the great things that these people do every day, if we can do it in the right way. And it's important that we do it the right way. In the past, I heard it was not done in the right way, and we can make sure that we do it in the right way. But to your point, initially, there was pushback. The, the directors did not want to pick that person. It came to the point where, why don't we have the employees put that person to the front, who they felt did a really good job? So it was, all of the employees pushing that one person-
Right.
-in suggesting that, that person. And if, if, if we feel that this is, is not, not a good thing, I certainly don't want to make any of the employees mad, but I can tell you, as a, as a firefighter, in these positions, if, if I was put forward by my peers, and I got a cash prize for that, a $500 that I could spend on my family, or $1,000, whoever the employee of the year is, that's a big deal. And having their families come here, and that person getting the award, it, it's a big deal. It, it's how we present that, that thanks, and I think it's, it could be a good thing. That, that's, of course, my opinion.
Certainly not. I'm, my only, I was only answering the question I was asked.
Certainly.
And that, that's my interpretation of what received. That said, the, we're certainly not arguing, if the Board chooses to, to pass it, pass a resolution or vote to approve this program, we'll adhere to it to the letter. No question about that at all. But that's, that's the most I can offer. I apologize.
Would it be a better thing to take Commissioner Dawson's idea and kind of, if we started giving, after three years, the, every employee that stayed three years got a bonus. Five years, they got a bonus. That way, everyone would have that to work toward, knowing that would come?
I, I don't know. I, I, obviously, at that point, it recognizes longevity. I don't know if it accomplishes the stated goal of recognizing-
One employee.
-accomplishments or some other thing. So I think that'd be the difference. I think one's, one longevity, while, listen, no one's going to fuss about getting a few extra dollars, I think longevity becomes normal. Again, not that they wouldn't, I'm, I'm sure they're going to welcome that, whatever thing, but I, I think it becomes, again, I think it becomes a normal part of the process. I think at that point, it becomes, hey, I stay here three years, I get X amount of dollars. Five years, I get that amount of dollars. It becomes, at that point, just a, a normal part of compensation and not a-
And I'm sorry, I, I got a, saw, off on a tangent. This was about the parking lot list, or the, the other list. What do you guys think about having that list? Do we, do we need it? Do we not need it?
I, I think that if we're responsible, like, you've brought this back up again. So if we've had something brought up, then we should be the one to bring it back up if it's not addressed.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we'll just keep bringing it up. Okay. And we'll do that, and we'll ask for updates and, and so forth. That, that's fine.
The end? The end? That was a question. Are you feeding?
Yes, Mayor. The end.
Okay. I would also like to-
Are you saying about that issue?
No, no, if you were-
Oh, no, I'm not done yet. No, no, no. So the last thing that I have is in regards to the Playground, the grand opening. So I, I've talked to the, the Park Operational Plan Committee, the Playground Committee, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, and I would love to see community involvement with this grand opening. I, I just would love to see that. I would like to see that the Playground Committee work with Richard Ross to plan this grand opening. Those two entities, Richard Ross, the Playground Committee, getting those folks together and planning this, this great grand opening that, that I would like to see in the, in the future. So I would like just to, to submit that to the B O C.
Do we have a Playground Committee?
Yes, I believe we do. Yes, we do. Playground Committee?
The same one?
The same one. Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I just-
Same one that we had before.
I was just asking the question. So it's the same one that kind of was overseeing-
Fundraising.
Before the Playground.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, it's the same one, where it's not a new committee that's being-
Correct.
-formed to, to, you know, oversee the grand opening?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
I agree. I think it's good. It's an extension of the Parks and Landscape Committee. It could probably help Mr. Ross with some volunteer hands and, and making things happen. And the more people we bring into it, the, the better, the more successful I think it'll be.
Is that, that's not something that we have to vote on? I mean, we, just a friendly suggestion?
No, I would, I would, I would suggest that be a resolution.
Okay.
We can't just ask Mr. Ross to reach out to that committee and work with them?
My concern for that, outside of some formal action that takes place here, is a splintering of opinions or directions or preferences among, among the Parks Committee, or among the Playground Committee, if we don't have some formal designation that they be the group to do that. It would be very helpful for us operationally if we could have some sort of, some resolution stating that's the preference, so we can go back to that group and piece that together. I think outside of that, we're just having a bunch of conversations that we can't really hold together. This helps us out if the, if the Board doesn't mind doing that.
Okay.
Makes our task easier.
That's all I have, Mayor, tonight.
Thank you. So I would like to thank the staff for July 3rd event. I know it was exhausting. I know that you put in more hours and, and surely sweated more than any other humans I've ever seen in my life, but it was a great event. And I wish, I wish that Richard were here to hear that. here to hear that, but I hate much brother be where he is, I'm sure. So with that, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.